Good morning, everyone. Anyone that would like donuts or coffee in the back? Thank you, Felicia. And Shawana for getting the donuts and the coffee to get it this morning. We're going to start with the state of the city. And then we're going to discuss briefly what's next for Conway. And then we're going to hear from our larger departments on their, what they have going on right now. And what some of their future needs are. At this time, I'm going to move up to the podium. We'll put it up on the screen behind me and get this thing started. Felicia's not working. So this morning, we're going to briefly discuss economic development, transportation, public safety, some of our community partnerships and our parks and recreation facilities. As far as economic development, of course, you know Clayton Homes. We've got a new company coming in there. I guess Warren Buffett finally decided to sell that building and move forward with it. But we're really looking forward to that. Lewis Crossing, there's some really exciting things going on at Lewis Crossing. We actually have a private entity or individual that is looking at building a convention center and a hotel. Mr. Hawkins has been working on this with us as well. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. That's an exciting project that we're looking forward to and hope it moves forward. Central Coal Solutions, that's a $40 million investment that is going in out close to where West Rock Coffee is. And we have several economic projects in the pipeline. And what's really interesting about some of these that we've been talking about is, you know, in our office, it's not unusual to discuss companies that are going to spend millions of dollars in Conway. Well, this last project we've been talking about, they're talking in billions in Conway with their investment. And I think when it's all built out, the number of jobs will be over 800. Transportation, of course, we have sidewalk construction maintenance ongoing. We're going to talk a little bit about Salem Bridge and Salem Road construction. The roundabouts at Prince Country Club, Highway 64 and Hogan, Salem and Meadow Lake. And I like that number there. We've got over 100 miles of new asphalt on the ground or on our streets. Salem Road, yes, the bridge construction has taken a while and it takes a while to build a bridge. It started this past summer. It does go to Dave Ward, from Dave Ward to college or vice versa. Bike lanes, turn lanes and sidewalks will really help us move traffic. It'll make it safer for the kids going to school. And we have the bridge going, the pedestrian underpass for folks walking and biking will go underneath the bridge. It'll help with traffic, but it will also help with safety. This picture was taken in the last few weeks. As you can see, the construction is ongoing and I do not want to speak for Kirk. You can ask him what the timeline looks on this. I think it's pretty well going to hit their target, maybe a little outside of that one way or the other. But it's progressing as scheduled. This is Hark Rider. This will be from Oak to Bruce. As you can see, we've got middle turn lanes there and sidewalks on either side. And this was more of a safety project for the city, more so than anything else. As you know, especially there at the intersection of Hark Rider and College, we've had, we've had some fatality accidents there and some major T-bone accidents there. But we thought we'd be well underway with this one. Of course, RDOT has bumped that back a little bit. That's one of those things you can visit with Kurt about as he comes up. Kurt? No, I'm not even going to ask you for a start, Dave. It didn't start?
Yeah, okay. I understand, I understand.
RDOT's very busy. All right, this is Highway 64, or there's a lot of folks, been here for a while, Old Marlton and Hope. Can you hear me now? Okay. I tell you, I travel this route quite a bit. And just that now on the little hills there on either side has made it much safer already. Have a much better, longer, wider range of visibility. This is progressing on time and is looking really good. Folks are worried about the log trucks. I promise you, they'll, they'll be able to negotiate it without any problem. We do, this was also a safety issue as well as a traffic issue. The number of accidents that we have out there and the severity of them was another reason why we wanted to move forward this. But it will move a lot of traffic. If you've ever been stuck trying to turn left in the mornings out there with this.
Mayor, I was out there yesterday and it really has made a tremendous difference.
Oh, yeah.
In line of sight and being able to see if you're coming on Hogan 264 either direction.
It makes a huge difference, it does. Of course, you know, we opened up Donkey and Caldwell. Conway Street Department built that roundabout for us, did a tremendous job. That moves traffic quite well. Donkey, the traffic on Donkey is so much better than it used to be. And we'll discuss some of the art that's going to be going in these here shortly. Princeton Country Club, if you've had a chance to drive out there lately, you'll notice that a lot of the infrastructure work has already started there. That will be the next spot that we go to moving forward. The structure movement, you know, that's one thing I want to discuss with folks. A lot of folks are always wanting to know why things take so long. Well, Conway Corporation always gets on board with us quickly and gets water and sewer and things like that moved. Our street department and those that we contract with do a tremendous job. But there are also many outside agencies that, that have timelines to follow and that have jobs going in other cities. That can be Windstream or AT&amp;T or anyone else. And again, weather play is a big part in it. But with the amount of infrastructure that's underground in Conway and so many other cities, a lot of things just take a lot of time. A lot of old things under our streets that we, they don't know about till we dig them up and find them. And then you have to bring in those companies. So even though we can set timelines and get things moving, sometimes things just have a way of changing. But we keep them moving and Conway Street Department does a tremendous job. This is, again, this is Prince and Country Club. Give you an idea, it'd be a four-way. Then we'll move to Salem Road and Meadow Lake. You know, due to the growth in Worcester and the cut through there, we have a lot of traffic in this area now. And again, this is an area that's dangerous to make a left turn out of, not to mention it's time consuming. So once they finish the Prince and Country Club, then they will be moving to the Salem Road and Meadow Lake. It will be a three-way. This was a tremendous job here that our street department did. This was a really dangerous area. If you took a right there and then tried to make a left on the Greenbrier Highway, the accidents there were, as Mr. Ledbetter can tell you and I can tell you, anytime you have a T-bone accident, your chances of getting hurt are pretty, pretty good. This was undertaken by the Conway Street Department. Now you can take a right onto the Greenbrier Highway. And if you need to go left, then you will go down to the light. This was also big for our new soccer park because of the number of folks that we have that will be using that. You know, we had over 700 kids sign up for recreational soccer this year in Conway, Arkansas. So this was a big safety and traffic moving project that the city undertook. Yes, sir.
Twenty years.
I know.
And finally, the shopping center folks got figured out, good for them too. I'm glad we did that.
Public safety. Conway Police Department made major adjustments to officer salaries to retain and recruit. We were losing a lot of good officers in policing and in America is a tough job. It's as tough as it comes. We have a community crisis response team. And these are some of the numbers I got from the chief. So if they're wrong, their chief Harris gave them, gave them to me wrong. Anyway, I think they respond between 13 and 16 calls a day in Conway. And the beauty of this is, let's just be quite honest. You know, not everyone needs to go to jail. Some folks just need some help. And typically, if you called 911 because you saw someone that was possibly in some distress, you sent police, fire and Pafford. Well, now they send this community crisis response team that have trained mental health professionals. The sergeant over that has a master's degree in that field. And then we have two personnel, is that correct, that we pay from, that, that comes in and works with them and they, they respond. And the savings, from what I understand, we're just sending that team instead of police, fire, Pafford. The first year was about 1.5 million. Does that sound right, chief? Yeah, so not only, you know, that's a, that's a little side note to it. That's a great thing that they were able to save that much. But the main thing is that it's getting people the help that they need. Like I said, not everyone needs to go to jail. Sometimes folks just need help. And this community crisis response team, I've had more positive comments about it than a lot of things in a while. They do a tremendous job. The chief has the Crime Suppression Unit up and running again. And of course, they are nationally accredited. Conway Fire Department, we recently opened Fire Station Three. They have an ISO rating of one and a federally accredited bomb squad. As you know, we have purchased two new trucks that are in service now. And we have two trucks that are on order that hopefully they will get in here sometime soon. I asked Mike, he just kind of shrugged his shoulders and said he's not sure. He's, he's working on it, trying to get them here. But they have a backlog of about three years on fire apparatus. Of course, Conway Overnight Shelter, we opened it and it stays at maximum occupancy. I'm going to let the chief talk about this when he comes up. But he can tell you, there's three, there are three facilities here that make up a large portion of our assaults. Is that correct, chief? Yeah, I'll let you talk about it when you get up here. But anyway, you can see Conway's a safe city. There's Station Three, was named after Doish Ballard. Chief Ledbetter and I worked a number of years with Chief Ballard. He was a great guy. Our Conway Overnight Shelter, emergency shelter. Downtown improvements, of course, this council knows they, we recently purchased the old Hambik and Furniture Building downtown and we're going to bring it down. we're going to bring it down and, and we're connecting our alleys. We'll have a pocket park in our alley right there by the, uh, Ghost Store and you will be able to walk. We will have art and lighting and places to sit. Uh, streetscaping, uh, not only this, but in the process of this, we're also working on our stormwater drainage. As you all know quite well, the, uh, addition of the MLK Park and the, uh, detention underneath that has made a tremendous difference in downtown flooding. And as you know, the street department is working now to widen the ditch, uh, back behind there and we're going to cover that so that people can walk in between all of our alleyways and connect downtown Conway. Locust Street, I was going to try to avoid that one. We, uh, hopefully that one will be paved, uh, by the end of this year. We, uh, Conway Corporation had to move their water, their sewer and their, uh, electric on that. They are in the final process of their move on that, which is electric. And once they finish that, then we will go in and, and rebuild Locust Street. Yes, sir.
Okay, I can head up to there for a second. We own a property on Locust and while that has been a total pain, the crews working on that have been so exceptionally kind and done everything they can to go above and beyond and work with us. So I know for other businesses on that street, it's been a big frustration, but really high commendation to those crews for really working to make that as smooth on us as they can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Downtown Entertainment District, we had our first kickoff of that this past weekend, and it was a tremendous success. I don't know if any of you went to the art wall, but it, the entertainment district, we're starting off slow with that. If you are a group that wants to have an entertainment or, uh, have a function downtown, you have to have a, uh, restaurant with a liquor license that's willing to be the sponsor of that. You have to get cups for that event and, uh, arm tags. And you also there, we have the area flag. Uh, it's not just a free for all where you can walk all over where you want to, but the areas that we're looking at at times has security, uh, Conway PD provides security. Areas are marked so that people know that they stay within their, uh, within the, the boundaries of that. It, as I said, Art Walk was the first kickoff and it was a tremendous success. Metro Connect, you know, we were getting a million dollars annually. That money was going to other cities and so, uh, we decided, and this council decided we would partner with Metro Connect. We didn't want to bring the big buses to Conway because we didn't know, they, they burned a lot of diesel, but not to mention that, they, uh, you hardly ever see them full. So we partnered with Metro Connect, bought two of these microbuses. And, uh, you can go online and you can get a ride anywhere in Conway for two dollars. Our biggest problem is it has been so successful that the wait times are around thirty minutes. The second problem we've had is we've got, we bought two more buses. We actually have four, but we cannot, uh, Metro Connect is having trouble. Rock Region Metro is having problems hiring drivers. As soon as we can get some drivers hired for Conway, Arkansas, then we we will have four buses up running. We would also like to establish a, a, a specific route, you know, to our universities, to our hospitals and places like that with drop off and pickup points. But, uh, also on election day, you can get a free ride to the polls if you need to vote.
Mayor, on that note, real quick, the million dollars you mentioned that was going to other cities, that's because we were unable to use it.
Correct.
Turn it back. So we figured out a way to use it.
Absolutely.
Here. And secondly, when I, uh, was recovering from my eye surgery and could not drive, I took one of these.
All right.
And it was very convenient, very efficient. Uh, I, we stopped and picked up riders. I was really impressed with how smooth the process was and the people on it were folks that don't have transportation most of the time. It was, I could tell it was very beneficial to them. It was good.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. If anyone's interested in a pretty good job, just driving around Conway and meeting great Conway folks, we're looking for some drivers. We're going to talk briefly about Laurel Gatling and if Tammy Keith or, uh, Tammy, if you're watching, I pronounced it that correct, Gatling Park, Bainbridge, Conway Station, Beaver Fork, Boat Slips. I've had a chance, look, that looks really great. It's Stone Damn Creek, tailing Pompey Park. Of course, you know, this council voted to turf all of our fields. Mr. Maddox, who has one of the top rated, twelve and under baseball teams in the nation right now, will tell you that this has also been a tremendous asset to Conway and that, Mr. Maddox was supposed to play in Mississippi today in the rain and the storms got him down there. These fields here, within thirty minutes of the rain stopping or the lightning stopping, you can be out playing on these. So if you're coming from Texas or Oklahoma or even just a kid playing recreational baseball, uh, once the lightning is gone, we can get you out there and get you playing. So folks who normally will look at the weather and especially if out of state and the competition, if the weather looks like it's going to be rainy, it doesn't hold them back any longer. There's a good chance that you're going to pay your entry fee and you're going to play ball in Conway, Arkansas. Then, uh, you're going to come on. So that's been a great economic boost to us. Another look at our parks. Yeah. Now Meadows Tech Park, hats off here to, uh, Jamie Gates and Terry Cottington. We had two events at Meadows Tech Park. They have worked the Conway, uh, youth cycling program here in Conway worked to build the park out there. They had eight hundred kids, the first go around, nine hundred, the second go around. When my wife and I went out there to watch, uh, of course, uh, I'm not as old as Mr. Ledbetter. He probably remembers Woodstock. Uh, but I told him this, actually, Mr. Ledbetter not to say this, that I told my wife, I said, I wonder if this is what Woodstock looked like. Cause when you pull over the top of the hill, all you could see was tents and people everywhere. It was just, it was just really awful. And, uh, the, uh, competition among the, the, the kids is great. The high school teams, the junior high teams and the youth. And, uh, everyone out there was having a great time. If you haven't had a chance to go watch that next year, please get out and, and watch. It's, it's a great event for Conway, brings a lot of people here. MLK Park, of course, as this council know, uh, the park turned out to be such a, uh, an asset to our city. What the public in general may not know is that at, at first shake, it was going to be a detention pond, just a, just a big hole in the ground with grass. About a federal grant, I'm sorry, a state grant from Arkansas Parks Tourism, build the MLK Park. It still is a detention pond, but you can't tell it. And not only is it, it filters out the silt off of the stormwater before it drops and goes into Lake Conway. MLK Park is, uh, it's a beautiful park. The art sculpture there on Dr. King is, uh, something looking out. Folks are, ask us a lot about the, the bushes and the, the plants that we have in there. That is part of the detention process there. They look, they look a little scruffy in the, in the winter, but in summertime they, they come back out. We are also going to build a bathroom there, public, public restroom there. And, uh, if you remember the, the scrapyard that was there, this has been tremendous change for, from, from I keep losing my sound, from Markham Street. It's been a tremendous change for Markham Street. Pompey Park, okay, this is not a veterans memorial. This is to honor veterans, past, present and future, and their families. And, uh, we, we've, uh, had several events out there on Veterans Day on nine eleven. And, uh, if you had a chance to drive by there and look at it now, it, it's really beautiful. It's a, it's a good way to honor our veterans and their families and, uh, personally, this is my personal opinion on this. There's not enough that we can do for our veterans and their families and those that serve in our military. These are the boots of Arkansas soldiers who have lost their lives since nine eleven. And we are the, uh, home base for this group now and, uh, you'll see this annually here in Conway. It's very somber, uh, it's very humbling. Uh, if you get a chance, you go see, it's the number of folks from Arkansas served since nine eleven and lost their lives. Downtown Murals, uh, that's one of my favorite ones right there. Uh, you're going to see some more murals upcoming in the future. I like to tell this story, uh, when we were getting ready to do the one on the fire, fire station, Chief Winter called me up and he said, "Mayor, I understand that, that, uh, we're looking at a mural on Fire Station." "Yeah, yeah, Chief. What do you think?" He said, "You're not going to be putting daisies and butterflies and stuff like that on there?" And I said, "No, sir, no, it'll, it'll be fire themed." So. We kept it real, Mike. Roundabout Art, so you're going to see, uh, city has partnered with Conway Regional, the Conway Area Chamber of Commerce and UCA. The, uh, three roundabouts on Donaghy Street will have roundabout art in those and these are going to be quite impressive. From what I understand, they're, they're in the twelve foot to twenty foot range as far as height. And the gentleman who built the sculpture for MLK Park is the one that will be doing these. These are, is, uh, the city built the pads and put the water and the electric. I think the first one you'll have to get with, I want to say, Felicia, is the first one going to be at, uh, Caldwell or you're going to see that start really taking shape. Not working again, Felicia. There we go. Conway Community Center. We hope that, we will have that up and running this summer. It's got indoor and outdoor aquatics, uh, fitness facility, eight volleyball courts. And yes, we have twelve pickleball courts, community meeting and event space, party rooms and room for growth. You can drive out on Central Landing Boulevard now and look out there and you can see all the slides and everything. This is going to be a tremendous asset for our city in that, uh, it's going to be very affordable. And, uh, when folks come to town to play baseball or whatever, they will be able to use it, but more importantly, our community will be able to, it's here, Conway and their families. There's our competition lane. We've already been in, uh, discussions with Conway High School, uh, to use this. It's eight lanes. We have a very large deck for the teams as well as, uh, seating for everyone. This is our, this is our, we, I think we, I've been calling it the Theo Jones Lazy River. This is, it's just a rendering of our Lazy River. Those are soccer fields and they're up and running. It's a really positive comments from some folks that the competition soccer is big in Conway, but I think is the greatest thing, but we had seven hundred kids, over seven hundred kids sign up for recreational soccer in Conway, Arkansas. So we're going to be doing both. We're going to be playing recreational soccer and we're going to continue with our competition soccer. I tried soccer once at Conway, twenty-four point six million dollar grant. It starts at the Don Owens Comp, or here, starts at the Don Owens Complex, goes back along the trail there, I'm sorry, back along the creek behind Target in that area. And then turns west. It's going to connect our college campuses. It's going to connect our hospital area. It's going to, uh, it's going to collect, uh, connect at least eleven neighborhoods. This Mel and her committee did an outstanding job on this and we were very excited. They're in the process now of purchasing right away and up and moving. Our goal is once, by the time we get to West Conway, hopefully we will be able to tie it all the way into the, to our airport. Just some renderings of what it's going to look like. Transparency. All right. We were recognized by the Arkansas Center for Research and Economics at the University of Central Arkansas. They are funded by the Koch family, Koch Foundation, which is a, a conservative family and, and foundation. Conway, Fayetteville and Springdale, uh, were sing- singled out as, as cities that were very transparent. It's real easy. Uh, you can go to open checkbook and and see where we pay for anything from toilet paper to fire trucks. You can go to Channel twenty-two and watch any meeting. Once we built or remodeled this building and we moved all of our meetings to City Hall, anywhere from our, uh, cemetery boards to our, uh, civil service. All meetings are held in City Hall. All meetings are live streamed. All meetings are recorded and you can watch them at any time. You can go to social media, up to anything that's going on in the city, or you can just do, we have a new, uh, program, just F O I. You can buy anything at any time. You can go online. You can look at our city's, uh, minutes from meetings from a number of years ago, and you can also pull up anything that's been recorded from a number of years ago. I think we are as transparent as you can be. As a matter of fact, I think we do everything that you can do as a city to be transparent. Here we go. So what's next? The council want to hear from each department and we need to consider what's next for the city of Conway. Future growth, future opportunities and how the economy and financial outlook that you hear from his plays into how the city moves forward. Here are a few things to consider. One is employee salaries. Prior to twenty seventeen, any employees went over, went eleven years without any adjustments to their salaries, COLA or any raises. That put us behind the eight ball there. However, starting in twenty seventeen, we've had about twenty-three percent increase in COLA raises for all employees, twenty-eight percent for fire and thirty-five percent above for PD. But the question is, how do we stay competitive with our peer cities? Capital investment in Fire Department. We're going to need a Station Eight, cost of fire trucks, an engine is about a million dollars. That truck is about one point five. Conway PD vehicles, training facilities, specifically a shooting range. They do not have one at this time. They need building expansion at Conway PD. For CIOC, we have network upgrades and radio system upgrades. Street infrastructure, the cost of building streets, as you know, is quite expensive. We need to continue our street overlay projects and our major street and, uh, projects. Our parks and recreation. What's next? There are a lot of great things that we can do with parks and re- ones, uh, if you look at the twenty thirty-five, an amphitheater. An amphitheater is something that folks would really like to see in Conway. We need to take a look at that. Lake Conway, we can partner around, right now somewhat with the state while Lake Conway is on drawdown to where we can build a park on the north end up by Candy Creek that has walkways where you could walk out over the water. They'll have kayaks, uh, a boardwalk that connects the property line where you could walk along the, the beach there, not beach, the shoreline there. A number of people have asked about the old Grand Theater downtown and what we could do with that to bring small projects in there. There's a, there's a whole world out there in that world. And back to the amph- my wife and I recently went to a Toby Mack concert in Little Rock, although it was at Simmons Bank Arena. The gentleman who brought that, uh, Toby Mack to the Simmons Arena lit. Can you hear me now? Okay. The gentleman who brought Toby Mack to, uh, Simmons lives in Conway. He is a promoter and he, he can bring some really great shows to Conway. Now, if you're my age, that would be, that'd be Three Dog Night or Sticks or someone like that. I mean, so, but even ZZ Top with the ones that are still alive, but that is something that, that the twenty thirty-five has shown that people are very interested in this. Get my notes back in order. Okay, yeah, here we are. District Court. We need to look at moving District Court out of downtown or at least to a different location in downtown. And there are several possibilities. Uh, one is right over here across from Rogue Roundabout. That will be That will be a great place for a parking deck. But also, uh, just had a brief discussion, very brief discussion with the owners of the Simmons, I'm sorry, the Regions Bank property. And asked them if they might be interested in selling that property. If they were, then possibly if council approves, we could. Turn that into District Court and build a parking deck. It would serve two purposes. Uh, one, it would give us parking for those who come to court during the day. But as court is over, uh, after usually most days fairly early, then it would allow for more parking downtown. We also might want to reimagine our current spaces in downtown Conway. I know that Farmer's Market, uh, we have two different groups. They are working together to come together. It would be great if we had a pavilion for down, in downtown Conway for our, for our Farmer's Market and any other event that we wanted to have downtown. That, and I do want to mention, I think that's all I had on our updates. But anyway. These are some of the things that we as a city need to look at. When I mentioned that these companies that meet with us and, and that you are aware of, there is a reason they want to come to Conway, Arkansas. We are, and I know everyone's heard this, we are the fastest growing city in the state two years in a row. We're also one of the fastest growing cities in the US for a city our size. There's a reason these folks want to come here. It's because of what we offer. We offer Conway Corporation has cheap water, electric. They're the goose that laid the golden egg. We have great schools. We have great eating establishments. Everything that you want in a city, we have, we're a safe city. Everything that we have is what folks, their employees want to have. And so you have these big companies wanting to invest in Conway and be here because their employees realize that Conway is a great place to live. You cannot make someone live in a city that they do not want to. So it's important for us to keep moving forward, to keep building this city and to bring the amenities here that, that we have the opportunity to bring. The question is, how do we afford it? And that's, those are the, some of the tough questions that will have to be asked. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Winningham and then let the departments bring you up to speed on what they see as their future needs based on Conway moving forward.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um, let's see how this mic works for, for my voice here. Typically, when I come before you each month, we talk about, you know, actual results from the prior month. Today I'm going to focus a little bit more on, like Mayor's talking about, uh, looking ahead. We're coming out of a really. Average sales tax growth from 2021 to 2023 was 10%. Uh, prior to that, and then also now we're back into, uh, the trend. Average annual growth is usually about three. So. That 10% for those few years has really been beneficial to us to build up our reserves in the general fund. But now we're back to 3% and, you know, who knows what the economy is going to look like going forward. Uh, we get a lot of, uh, we'll call it extreme rhetoric out of Washington DC. You know, one day we're talking high tariffs and then the next day you hear we're gonna hold off on that. So we really don't know how that's gonna affect the economy going forward. We'll just cross our fingers on that one, but. Um, excuse me. Right now in our general fund, we're sitting on about 17 million dollars. Which is, it's, and we hit 20 at the end of last year, and that's by far the highest, uh, that we've had in that, uh, general fund since I've worked for the city. We do have some big projects going right now that the mayor just went over. I'm projecting by the end of this year, we're gonna be sending about 10 million. In the general fund, and now that we are back to, uh, more average growth on sales tax, it's gonna take us a little bit longer to build that back up. If, if the council desires to build that back up. The, uh, national government finance. Gurus recommend that for reserves, you have on hand anywhere from three to six months of what your expenses are. Uh, in our general fund, three months of expenses would be a little under 13 million. Or six months would be about 25 and a half million. So at the end of the year, 10 million, we'll be a little bit shy of having three months of expenses. And we've never had it, you know, like I said, we hit 20 million at the end of last year, but we've never had anywhere even close to 25 million. That would be great if we could have that, but I don't necessarily think the council. You know, we're, we're not in the business of, uh, maximizing profit and, uh, stacking money. We want, you know, the resources that we do get, we want to provide services and in a responsible manner. For comparison, the last time the general fund was at 10 million was back in 2021. So. Again, uh, I think the general fund, uh, is for sure in the best shape it's been since I've worked here. So we're, we're in a great position to kind of tackle some of these, uh, projects and issues that the mayor mentioned for discussion coming up. Um, our reserve account, uh, that the council set aside several years ago, it's at $2 million. No plans to dip into that anytime soon. Um, our street fund has about 6 million in their reserves right now. They're about to move into that facility, the new facility on Hark Rider. That's gonna be, you know, there're gonna be some upfront expense to get into that building. It'll be a little bit more expensive to operate. But we'll keep an eye on that going forward. Uh, sanitation fund, they've got about 15 million right now. They're looking at some big projects as well. They're, uh, I think the council voted. At the, the last meeting or the one before about the landfill expansion. And then there's a, a desire for a new facility out there at some point in time. Our AMP fund, which has, uh, been great for us to do these projects that you saw the pictures of, the ball fields and so forth. We've got about 1.4 million dollars in that account right now. And I'm projecting by the end of the year, we're gonna be a little bit shy of a million, maybe around 900,000 in that account. But that account, it's, it's working hard for us. It's, it's got debt that it's paying for us on our most recent bond issue for the community and aquatic center. It's gonna help out with operations out there, and then it's also gonna help with the finishing of the construction. So we're glad that we have that resource available to us to do these great park projects. And then our two big, uh, project accounts that, uh, you guys see each month, the last page in the financials. We have our page to go sales tax and then we have the 2018 street sales tax. Page to go is sitting on about 13 million. Our street sales tax has 19 million. And, uh, again, like I mentioned before, those are, those are big, good numbers, but I think our, I think our guys at transportation department have that, have plans to spend all of that. So again, that's good that we have those resources on hand to tackle these projects that we've got ahead of us. One thing to keep in mind, um, for next year, we're still early in '25, but in 2026, our loan is gonna come due on the airport. So that $600,000, we'll need to budget away to, to pay for that next year. Just wanted to kind of bring that back to the surface so we don't forget about it, of course.
Payment on that is 20.
Well, it's the only payment. It was, uh.
That would be the last payment.
Yes, sir. They structured it to where it was just, where we've been making an interest payment each year, but they let all the principal be due at maturity. So. And all these funds on hand, uh, that I just mentioned. Um, we have, uh, Centennial Bank here in Conway is our, is the city's bank. And we're earning about four, just under four and a half percent interest on all those balances right now. So, uh, Centennial Bank is an excellent partner for the city and, uh, you know, you compare that four and a half percent, that's, that's CD level rates and they're, and we're getting that just on our checking balances. So we're very thankful for that. And that's all I've got, Mayor, unless anybody has anything they'd like to discuss further.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Winningham?
Winningham has been bringing us some good numbers. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yep.
Which one of you lucky department heads is up next? Chief Harris, do you get to go ahead of Chief Winner today? All right.
How'd that happen?
Good morning. You bribe the right people. So just to touch what the mayor was talking before the needs, um, in 2024, our violent crime was down 1% compared to the year before. And our property crime was down 15%. And so what the mayor touched on is why we still report all numbers to the feds. Where we get the crime statistics, there are a few entities in our city psychiatric facilities, living centers. That are mandated reporters. With that being said, um, so you may have somebody in one of the psychiatric facilities from another part of the state that comes here. And while they're in that facility. Make a threat, attack a person that lives there. And while that is a report we take for an aggravated assault and it goes towards our numbers. I was curious is when I took out the three entities that are living facility psychiatric, so basically the people that are there, living there. Are ordered there by the court or not running around in Conway as far as that. But I, so I took out the three entities just as a curiosity and our violent crime would have been down 8%. So, um, it just gives you a look that now. Obviously we still report all numbers, but I was just curious because I kept seeing, um, you know, like these aggravated assaults. And I was like, but I'm not hearing about that, but I'm seeing it. And so that's where you get at some of these. So some of the living facilities are obviously mandated reporters. So for example, if you have a 90-year-old patient that quote unquote attacks another 90-year-old patient. That's considered obviously a mandated report to the police department and that goes in our statistics. So I just wanted to touch on that. I also wanted to touch on in 2024, as the council knows, y'all approved a, a victim service coordinator position. Um, what that does is we have a full-time position and then another part-time position. And what those, um, two ladies do is anybody that's a victim of a crime in our city, they reach out to them. And they guide them through whatever they need, through the legal process, through the court system, just to lend an ear. Um, to talk to them and hear about them. So I just wanted to report that since y'all approved that position back in, I believe it was July of 2024. We've had 947 victim interactions. So we, we're really proud of that. And that's just, at, at the bare minimum, maybe that's 947 people that get a little peace. Or somebody at least listening to them.
Chief, did you say that was approved in 2024?
Yes.
947 interactions already? So they're averaging three plus a day?
Yes. So they, they, basically what happens is when they have access to our reports and they look at our reports, anybody that's a victims of a crime. We reach out to them just to see if there is anything they need, um, talked to. And oftentimes people don't need anything, but oftentimes I see from where my office is, victims of crimes will come up and talk with the ladies. Just about what, you know, I, I let them talk and the door shut and just whatever they need. So we've had a lot of great feedback from that because I mean, honestly, in the past, we've never done that.
And that's, that's connecting them to whatever resources they need, whether that's legal help, whether that's something else.
Yes. Oftentimes a lot of people don't just understand, once you're a victim of a crime, what happens next? So, and, and we just guide them through whatever they need, or if it's finding other resources, somebody to talk to.
Yeah.
So.
It's a great service.
We're, we're proud of that. As far as needs, I touched ba- I touched on this on this past council. Um, one of our biggest needs is our police department. It was built in 2009 when we moved in. Obviously it's a little over 15 years old. Since then, um, with the mayor and the council approval, we've added officers. We've added civilian positions. Um, one thing we haven't added is space for the police department. So we, we've been creative. Um, we have our FOI office, uh, was in a storage closet that we turned into an office. Um, but we also have, where, where we had new, new departments, such as the mayor touched on, our cr- our crisis, critical. Excuse me. Our crisis response team for people that are having mental health crisis episodes with HIPAA laws and everything else. When we took over the P, uh, the Pierce Heating and Air Building, we moved them there. So they have their own office space if they need to bring people in and talk to them and the counselors need to talk to them. So that's another space. We obviously just rented a space for part of our investigations. Um, so in the future, we're gonna need, um, not necessarily, I don't want to move. I love the location that we're at, but we're gonna have to add on at some point. Um, as the mayor touched on, the shooting range, we're, we're one of the largest departments in the state that doesn't have a designated shooting range. We had one and it was great, but obviously with the growth of the city, everything grew around the shooting range. So we were just, um, you know, just goes without being said, when you have townhouses and, and other things around that shooting range. Currently we were in contract with a shooting range S7, um, which they've been great. Don't get me wrong. We have a great working relationship that we rent yearly from them and they give us ample time to go out there and do everything that we need. But at the end, we're at the mercy of them. If, uh, they ever sell that or, you know, something else happens, then we, we're out of a shooting range. Vehicles, y'all approved seven, um, not too long ago when we're very appreciative. Um, however, just to give you some numbers, we have about 100. We did have 140, um, roughly vehicles in our fleet. Um, right now 73 of those vehicles have over 100,000 miles. Of those 73, 52 have over 120,000, 38 have over 140,000. So, um, we get our use out of them for sure. But we're gonna have to at some point start or we're gonna go on the other side where we're. Um, I'll actually, I'm currently in a position now where I'm deadlining more vehicles than we're, we can buy at the moment. Um, but I've talked to the mayor and we're, we're working on that. And then finally, um, just personnel, while personnel right now is not an issue, um, currently. Um, there are things that we need to add civilian wise and just as the city grows. You know, if you're the fastest growing city two years and you're expanding out in all directions, you'll just obviously need more personnel at that time. So with that, do anybody have any questions?
Tell me again, how many cars did you say we have?
Well, roughly it was 140. The problem is some have, you know, ended up in a ditch in a pursuit or some just. You know, we have two vehicles that have over 200,000 miles on it. Um, and so 17 have 150,000. And you're getting to a point where the safety factor of if we get into a pursuit.
Oh yeah, I, I get that. Um, but, and a few maybe in a ditch or op- or unoperable, but most of them are operable?
Yes. So when, when I say a lot of that, we have a take home program. So.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, yes. So a lot of our officers are, are, have the older vehicles. Our newer vehicles are our zone cars. So yes.
We don't have that many officers. We don't have 140 officers, do we?
Uh, we have, we'll have 138 here within the next.
Okay, alright. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Very good. Thank you.
Question if I might. Chief, we have a, uh, bitten ode on high-speed pursuits in neighborhoods. Do we have anything written down on that? And the reason that I ask the question is, I have a good friend of mine whose daughter. Was riding her bicycle in the community that she lived in. It was a high-speed chase, uh, involving police, not in this state, it was in another state. And, uh, resulted in the vehicle hitting this young lady and she died very tragically. Do we have any rules, regulations on how we handle situations?
Absolutely. So we, we actually have a pursuit policy that at the very end, just to regard, do regard for safety of others is, is top priority. So just because we're in a pursuit, there's all, all types of rules and regulations. For example, a school zone. Okay. We know if it's a school zone and we're chasing somebody, we, we don't continue a, a pursuit through a school zone when school's going on. Um, you have to take into fact of a neighborhood. You know, if it's a Saturday afternoon and, and there's children now. And we, we have done a good job and we have stressed this ever since I've been there, that you, you basically, as we call it 1022, you cancel your pursuit. Or we also have, as soon as somebody gets in a pursuit, a supervisor has, supervisor has to take incident command. So they're listening to this. And so they know that, hey, if we're going down Donaghy Avenue, um, 2 o'clock on a Saturday. And the officer comes on and says, the suspect vehicle's driving 100 miles an hour. That supervisor is gonna tell him 1022, if the officer doesn't tell him. And, and we also do vehicle, uh, pursuit drills every month. So we're, we're just getting into the habit. So yes, we, there, there's all types of, I, I told, it was funny one time. That everybody, the number one policy that everybody knew there was the pursuit policy. They know how many officers can be in a pursuit. They know the pursuit drills have to be turned in to the division commander that we've done them. So it's, if somebody makes a mistake and, you know, I'm not saying it'll never happen, but it's not for not knowing.
Oh, I just wanted to, to ask that question because it did hit close.
Absolutely. I agree.
And because we are a bike-friendly community, we have a lot more people on bikes now than we used to have. So that's the reason I brought that up. Thank you very much.
One quick question. Do, do you know what the average mileage is for one of our police vehicles?
Um.
I mean, is it? And it, I, I was just curious.
I do know. So, I mean, I'm trying to look at my numbers here. So tot-, well, let me just give you some numbers. So our total fleet has over twelve million miles on the, on the vehicles. Um, average mile for a vehicle is ninety six thousand. Um, last year, our fleet, um, drove over one point two five million miles. So we keep, we keep that on just about everything, just so, um, so it, it, it breaks it down into which division, what their mileage is and everything else.
What does a new police car cost?
Ninety five thousand dollars. Well, let me back up, I'm sorry. It is for, from the time we order a vehicle to the time we add the computers, the printers, the, the cameras, um, it's ninety five thousand dollars for a vehicle to get on the street. Uh, roughly four or five years ago was around sixty.
I was going to sum in.
Yeah. Yes. So that's just every, I mean, when you're looking at vehicles have gone up, obviously our watch guard camera system's gone up, everything, everybody wants a piece of the pie.
Any more questions to the chief? We're going to take about a five minute break, uh, get some more coffee and there're donuts in the back again. Anyone, please help yourself.
Because I'm up here.
Yeah.
Kurt and Jacob, we'll just call you guys up next. Street Department of Transportation.
Kurt, Kurt took off.
Good morning. Um, the mayor went over a lot of the, you know, recent projects that we've, uh, that we've done and did a very good job of it. But, and I, and, and so I'm not going to go back over a lot of that.
Don't hold back. Tell me what you really think.
I would be happy to answer any questions, fill in any gaps that, uh, he left out. But we have, you know, the transportation department, I've, I've been working with the transportation department for a little over five years. Um, and, and one thing that I want to kind of reiterate that the mayor said is just the, I guess, the, the attraction of, of Conway to its citizens and, and people looking to, to work and, and move here. I moved here from, from Russellville, uh, about five years ago. And, you know, one of the things that attracted me to Conway was, you know, the quality of life in Conway and the amenities that we have in the city, the trail system and parks and so forth. And that was, uh, so that was, you know, that was, that was a key, uh, component of my decision to, to relocate to the Conway area. Just a brief overview of our, the transportation department and, and what we actually, you know, are responsible for. We've got, we're, we're pushing near, I think, around three hundred and seventy miles of, of streets in the city. Uh, those streets, as you're, you are all aware, are very expensive to, to maintain. Um, currently, you know, our estimate is that if we were to overlay every street in town, um, every twenty years, which is twenty years is, is an optimistic projection of the lifespan of an asphalt street, but, and we don't get twenty years out of our, some of our heavily, more heavily traveled streets. But if we were to overlay every street every twenty years, our overlay, uh, cost annually, and this is in today's dollars, would be four million dollars. We currently probably, um, it, it, it varies year to year, but we currently average about a million and a half per year that we spend on overlays. So you can see that we're not, you know, we're not keeping up with that twenty year life cycle for, for asphalt right now. And we're continuing to add to that inventory as well as, as new developments come in and so forth. Um, you know, Tyler mentioned, uh, the, the fund balance that we've got and, and it seems like a lot, but we have a lot of commitments out there, uh, mainly with the highway department, uh, partnerships that, you know, big projects that we've got coming up and those kind of keep getting pushed back. There's a lot of, uh, uh, you know, there's, the mayor mentioned the Hark Rider project, which, uh, I think, I don't know what the original schedule was on that, but I know when I came here, I think it was a twenty twenty three job. And, and now the, uh, the current, uh, letting date that they've got scheduled, I believe is in twenty six, but they're not going to make that. Uh, there's some, there's some significant utility relocations that have got to be accomplished, uh, prior to that project. And I know that, uh, you know, they've, they're, they're, that's a very, very, uh, involved, um, project. And you can, well, you can drive down it right now and the project is basically widening from four lanes to five lanes. And you can see that, you know, there's not a lot of space down through there. And so it's, 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 that's, that is a, you know, major project. Another major project that the highway department has, uh, going on is the Dave Ward project, uh, which will run from Hark Rider to I forty. Uh, if you've ever driven down that section of roadway in the afternoon around, uh, quitting time between four and five, you know what's, you know what you're in for there. Uh, that project entails, you know, produce, a median divided section with three lanes on each side, uh, and intersection improvements at the signalized intersections there that we've, that we've got. Uh, there, again, that's another project that right now, I believe the let date on that is scheduled for next year, twenty twenty six. Um, they're probably a little bit closer on that one than Hark Rider as far as schedule wise. Uh, another major project that they have that is the, uh, that y'all recently passed a resolution, I think towards the end of last year, uh, for Robbins and Hark Rider, that intersection, uh, improvement there at the railroad track. That one is, is scheduled to let this year. Uh, we're working with them right now and some, on finalizing some, um, paperwork on that project. Uh, of course, the Hogan and sixty four roundabout, it's, it's scheduled to be completed, uh, sometime later this year. And then they've got another, uh, project on Dave Ward out to the, uh, out to the, uh, east there from, uh, you know, where the, past the roundabouts on out to German, East German and Mayor Lane there. And that's going to include some intersection improvements there as well, which would be, um, uh, we're partnering with them on that. That's, that's going to be, uh, probably a two million dollar, uh, project, but to, our portion of that project will be about two million dollars. Um, we are, you know, we're in the process of moving into our new facility out on Hark Rider. We're excited about that. That's going to be a lot of space for us. Uh, we, you know, Conway Corporation has vacated that building. Uh, we're in the process of, you know, kind of sprucing it up a little bit, doing some painting and so forth, but, and then, uh, there will be a lot of IT, uh, work, you know, to get technology in the building and so forth. And we're expect, we're hoping to, uh, start that move next month. Um, you know, just briefly, some projects that we've, that, that we've got going on right now. Of course, everyone's aware of the Salem Bridge project. The plan is to have that roadway opened, uh, by the end of spring. And then, uh, the project itself will be complete sometime later this summer. Uh, but the road should be passable by, uh, late spring. We've got, uh, we just bid in.
May?
Uh huh.
May?
May, yes. By May, yes. Yes, sir. Um, the, um, the, the project that we brought before you, the last council meeting, Nutter Chapel, that project, uh, you know, we're planning on starting that, uh, construction on that later this spring. Uh, we've got the roundabout at, uh, at Prince and Country Club that, uh, will start construction here probably within the next month. Um, we've got, uh, let's see, of course, the downtown street improvements and the alley improvement project. Uh, Conway Corporation is completing their utility relocations on Chestnut. We've already done some of that Chestnut run, but, uh, they, they should be finished this month and, and then we'll move in with our, uh, crews and complete that project. The, um, let's see, what else on, um, future projects, um, that we've got coming up and you, I, I believe y'all have got the list here in front of you, but, you know, a couple of major roadway projects that we've got coming up are going to be the Sturmer Road, uh, there from Salem to Country Club and then finishing out that Country Club run on down, um, to Dave Ward. Uh, we're currently, we've started design on that project. Um, the next roundabout project will be the, the Salem and Meadow Lake after Prince and Country Club. Uh, let's see, we've got, uh, we've got a couple, we've got a little section of Tyler Street that we're wanting to finish out there towards the end at, uh, there at Pageant. Uh, the Meadow Lake Road from, from Donaghy to Wash- The Meadow Lake Road from, from Donaghy to Washington is a little narrow section there, and there's a new development going in on that right now. And we're, we, we've kind of had that on the books for a while. We've got a couple of new roundabout, you know, future roundabout projects that we're looking at, uh, Washington, Spruce and Front Street, that weird intersection that we've got over there on the south end of Hendrix. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, we're doing a, uh, a delay study on Favre and South German, that intersection. The Amity and Middle Road, and then a big one that, uh, we had talked about with, uh, the, Jim Baker, the former county judge, was in potentially partnership with them, was the roundabout out at Middle Road and, um, in East German. Now, that project's going to be, uh, you know, it's a weird offset intersection due to the, due to the creek crossing there and the bridge. And that's, you know, that's, that one's going to be a, that one's going to be a challenge. It's obviously going to involve a new bridge structure. And then, you know, one of the things that, that, that we kind of struggle with a lot is the, uh, our drainage. Right now, you know, we don't, we don't have a real funding source for off right-of-way drainage improvements in projects. And a lot of that, you know, we've got a lot of major ditchways and, and drainage ways that are off our street right-of-way. And we can't, you know, we can't use the, you know, the, the, the turnback funding from the state for that type of work. And, and that's one of the things that I know prior to my time, there had been some talk about, you know, a potential, um, drainage utility, establishing a drainage utility within the city. But, you know, some kind of funding mechanism that would enable us to fund some of these off-street drainage improvements would be, would be beneficial to our department, I think, because we get a lot of calls on, on some of the drainage ditches and, and so forth that are off, uh, off the street right-of-way. And then, you know, major projects in the future that, that, that are on the radar are, you know, some of these, you know, the Western arterial loop bypass that would, that would connect all the way back up, um, well, from Baker Wills up around and then tie into Hogan. And then, you know, we've also been knocking around the idea of, you know, some kind of connection that would, from Highway sixty-four up to sixty-five there on the eastern, a kind of an eastern loop bypass over in that side as well. But, uh, other than that, you know, we're, we've, you know, the, the Oak Street, uh, a head project that study, corridor study that was completed here a year or so ago, pointed out some, some potential improvements to some of the intersections that we can do along the Oak Street. We've already done some design work on one there at East German and, uh, and Oak. That would improve the capacity or efficiency of that intersection by seventy percent roughly. We're also looking at some potential improvements there, uh, at Museum and Elsinger as well. And then we've got some, uh, we've started some initial kind of evaluation of the, you know, on Dave Ward of, um, the South German and Dave Ward intersections, looking at some improvements that we could possibly do there. With that, I'd open it up if you've got any questions about anything that's, we've got going on, I'd be happy to, or that the mayor had discussed previously, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
I do know that, uh, people frequently ask about the east-west bypass.
Yes.
The one thing we can run and say about it now, that discussion was held with our federal representatives this past February. So it is still, it is still alive and well. It's, uh, it's down the road, but no, it is, it is not, it is not dormant.
And that's why I say that's something, it's, it's on the radar, it's, it's out there, it's, it's, it's a, you know, is obviously that, anything that we can do in the future to relieve some of that traffic and congestion on Dave Ward, we're looking for opportunities, but that one, as the mayor mentioned, I mean, is, it's, uh, that's going to be an extremely expensive project and it's going to definitely require some, um, some, you know, funding source.
I think it's north of a hundred million, is that correct?
Uh, probably, all phases, yes, sir. Yeah, that's about a hundred million is probably a good number for that one.
Any questions for Kurt or Jacob? Jacob loves to talk, if y'all want to get him up here.
On the, on the overlays, and I know they're not all created equal, are a little more work than others, but basically the numbers you gave us, forty miles, it's two hundred thousand dollars a mile just for overlays, basically. And, you know, one, one thing I've learned that all this stuff costs way more than you think it should, all this stuff, overlays to equipment, it's.
And one thing I would, I might point out, the way we, uh, you know, because we get asked, of course, we get a lot of requests for, will you come overlay my street? Will you come overlay my street? And what we do is every two to three years, we, we have a company that comes in and actually does a pavement assessment. And, and every mile of our street system is, is driven and camered and videoed, and that's actually available online. And then that, those pavement sections are actually evaluated and ranked and rated. And then we use that information along with, uh, you know, traffic counts and so forth on the streets. You know, obviously, if two streets are both in bad shape, but one's got a higher traffic count, that one's going to take priority. And that's kind of how we prioritize our, our overlay sequence.
Yeah, it's been a good program, and it is available online, if I look at it. Any other questions? Thank you, Kurt.
All right, thank you.
Jamie, uh, had a previous engagement. We're going to ask Felicia to come up and give you all a briefing on the Conway Community Center.
Welcome. So Ms. Jamie is, um, her and Michael are both benchmarking, uh, an event, a senior Olympics event in the city of Russellville, so they've been hard at work, uh, doing that a lot since they, uh, both came online for the community center. They've been benchmarking our peer cities, uh, how they do their events, how they do anything from concessions to cafe to, um, volleyball. They've been hard at work, so kudos to them, um, for that. We are super excited to get this community center open. Uh, we are still looking at mid Septe-, oh, no, midsummer before, uh, we get it open. But, um, as you can tell, if you look at the packet that I gave you guys, uh, we are pretty far along the interior. The floors are down, uh, doors are up. We are, uh, putting, uh, we are finishing out the leisure pools. And we are, we are on schedule. So again, we look to have this up and open, um, summer. And so we will start, uh, we will finish hiring also, we'll, we've already started hiring some positions. But mid-April and May, we will look at hiring even more people, lifeguards. And then we will also look at opening up for memberships for the community center. So we'll look to do that in advance, uh, so that, uh, when it opens, you'll be ready to go, so.
Question?
Maybe.
The rooms that we have available for rent, uh, if someone wants to have a.
Birthday party.
Gathering, birthday party or a meeting or, or something. How large are those particular rooms? Do we have different sizes of rooms?
We do, so we can accommodate, uh, different, uh, size parties in each of our rooms. We have party rooms, we can do twelve to fifteen. We have multipurpose spaces where we can turn to twenty to twenty-five. But we did, uh, look at one of the bigger spaces in the community center. Um, and we did that as one big space, so that space can hold up to a hundred and twenty with tables and chairs. Um, it'll have audio visual in there, and so you'll be able to have a big event in that room.
And are those prices on the website?
They are not yet. No, they are not yet. But we'll, we'll, we'll have one, um, we will present to you all one sheet for all the extra stuff that we're doing. So for all classes we're going to have, for all the, uh, uh, event, uh, rooms we're going to have, we'll present one sheet to council just to look at and make sure we're good with those, those rates. Because we still have to negotiate again, some of our external parties that want to use the facility. We still need to look at those rates and make sure you guys are good with those.
And as we go through this, we got to be a balancing act with, with schools wanting to bring swim teams in and people that look like my age bracket that might want to swim about. Might want to swim.
Absolutely, so.
So be sure to make.
Yes, we want to keep a good balance for the community center. We have had a lot of interest from a lot of different groups who want to use the facility, and we do want to make that open for them. But the one big thing that we want to keep in mind is that it's a community center open to the public. And so we really want the public to be able to use the facility, um, especially people who have gotten the membership. So we want it to be open and available. So we will definitely, uh, make sure that we do a good balance between, you know, individuals or events who wants to use them, but also make sure it's open to the public.
Love everybody.
And we will love everybody the same, so yes, it'll, it'll be great, yeah.
Felicia, I'm sure any of those external partnerships, I'm sure the term on those is short enough that if it doesn't work, we don't have to repeat it.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Thank you guys for your work there.
How, how far ahead of the facility opening will we open up for memberships? So for people to actually purchase and?
Our goal would be forty-five to sixty days out. So again, April is a rainy season, and so we will get past April, and then NavHots will give us a pretty good date and a timeline, and we'll start working backwards from that date. Um, and, and we'll, we'll get you guys a date in advance. And then we will open up memberships based on that date. Again, it'll be, it'll be all hands on deck the last sixty to ninety days of that project just because we'll be working, uh, finishing the project, but also furnishing the building. So we'll have to come back in and do all the gym stuff, all the furnishings, you know, all the AMCO equipment. So that's what'll happen on the backend with staff.
All hands on deck means Andy's spreading mulch, right?
Andy will be, Andy will be more than happy to come over and help me, I'm sure.
Any other questions, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Next, we'll hear from Andrew Thames from our Parks and Recreation Department. Mike, the reason you're last is because Chief Harris requested that.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Um, so, spring has sprung and parks is ready to grow. Um, as you guys know, the soccer complex opened up without a hitch. We've had phenomenal feedback from the community members. I do have to thank you all for giving us the ability to kind of suspend the opening, um, and give us a little bit of time to, to get that up and ready. I don't think we would have gotten the feedback we had without y'all's decision. So mayor, council, thank you all for the ability for us to do that. So, uh, like I said, it's gone off without a hitch. Um, the mayor mentioned earlier that we had over seven hundred recreational, um, sign-ups with kids participating. And then we'll have the introduction of adult soccer in the fall of twenty twenty-five, which we've already gotten quite a few, um, comments about, and people are excited about that as well. So, um, with the rest of recreation, youth baseball, we've got over five hundred participants this, this spring. Uh, softball, we've got two hundred and fifty-five, T-ball, two hundred and thirty, and then we've got Braves coming up. So a lot of our leagues, age groups are full to the max. You know, we get late sign-ups and we accommodate them as, as much as we can. So we're doing really well on our recreational side, and that's in large part thanks to the turf fields we have at City of Colleges and Conway Station. Upcoming projects and events, um, the, the pickleball courts at Fifth are coming along, but as you guys know, weather's impacted us a little bit. Fury was out there the last couple of weeks. They set the light poles, they're waiting a couple of days for those to dry up. Um, electrical is done, so we should have, in large part, the, the majority of the construction done within the next hopefully week or so. After that, we'll get everything cleaned up, um, we'll get stuff painted, nets put up, bleachers put in, and we'll be ready to rock and roll. So we're looking forward to opening that here this spring. Yeah, for, for, and they'll be lit, um, a lot like Gatling, um, is right now, so people will be able to play throughout the night. Other than that, we've got bathrooms at Pompey Park and MLK planned. Um, we get a lot of comments on that, so we, we heard you. That's what the architects write now, and we're just kind of waiting to hear back on those. Past that, we installed dugouts at Conway's, or, sorry, we installed fans in the dugouts at Conway Station. Um, last summer with turf fields during the summer, those fields can get up to a hundred and twenty degrees. We got really good feedback on that, so we're going to install fans at City of Colleges, um, here, hopefully within the next couple of weeks to be ready to go for, for summer. Um, so that's another project we've got going. With Pompey Park being completed for the most part, we're right now working on the recreation of the pump track over there. Um, so that hopefully will be taking shape in the near future as well.
What does that mean?
The pump track?
Yeah.
So I guess it'll, it would be on the west side, kind of behind the, uh, the gas station. There's an old biking track, it's kind of a soft surface.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. With the new addition, yeah, with the new addition of the west side, they had to go in and kind of remove that with the machinery, so we're going to.
I just didn't know what a pump track was. I see it every day, so that helps.
Yep, yep. Other than that, we, we did go back out to, to soccer to finish some sidewalk areas. They started on that yesterday, so within the next couple of weeks, we will have the soccer field surrounded by sidewalks to make getting around a little bit easier. This summer, well, this year, we've got forty-five baseball and softball tournaments scheduled. That number will go up, but that's what we have on the books right now. So that's forty-five weekends at, uh, City of Colleges and Conway Station, and that includes the U-SAA State Baseball Tournament, the U-SAA World Series Baseball Tournament, which are two big ones. Volleyball and basketball tournaments scheduled for twenty twenty-five, we've got twenty, and that includes the Who Play National Basketball Three-Day Tournament. That's a big one. Expo events scheduled for twenty twenty-five, we've got seventy-six. So the majority of our weekends, and then again, that number will go up as the year goes and people kind of reach out to us. Tennis events, we've got twenty-five, which is a good number for them, so it keeps it open to the public, but also gets, um, some stuff going in that facility as well. And then just a couple of other dates, the Fishing Derby at Conway Station is March twenty-ninth here in a couple of weeks. And then we're going to do Characters in the Park, which we did last year, and that was a big hit with the community. That'll be May seventeenth at Laurel Park from ten AM to twelve PM. And then we are taking over as the City Lights Over the Lake at Beaver Fork. That'll be July third, um, with the, you know, four PM to ten PM or whenever the fireworks end.
Is that what City Church used to do? Is that?
Yes, yeah, formerly known as Freedom Fest. Um, it'll be called Lights Over the Lake now, and we'll have more information coming out within the next couple of weeks on what to expect from that. One other date I do want to mention is Splashpads at, um, Laurel, Fifth Avenue and the Soccer Complex. They're going to be opening Monday, May twelfth at nine AM, so get ready for those. And then, um, future needs, parks, like every department, is always looking to, to make, um, renovations and, and, you know, additions to our facilities. A lot of the big ones is going to be the renovation of Don Owen and McGee. Those buildings are, you know, approaching, if not thirty years old. And, um, we'd, we'd like to do some stuff within the buildings there as, you know, new paint on the interior, exterior, maybe renovate the bathrooms, et cetera. A new concessions building and restrooms at the Don Owen Sports Field, that building is approaching fifty years old. Um, so you can imagine kind of what the inside of that concession and, uh, restrooms look like as well. The, the turf fields at Don Owens right now are turfed on the infield, but the outfield is natural surface. At some point, we would probably need to go in, that turf is going to hit its life expectancy soon, and go in and re-turf those fields. Curtis Walker Baseball Field is the only natural surface baseball, softball field we have left in the city. With the exception of Beaver Fork, at some point, we would like to turf that as well. That is a heavily used, uh, facility, and we are prone to, to weather with that field, so. As well as that, the football field, we, we could look at renovating that with bleachers, possibly turfing that. Um, and then the rodeo arena, we could repurpose that for, for whatever use we see fit, whether that's rebuilding the arena entirely, um, or possibly putting extra baseball, softball fields down there to go with the three that we already have at Don Owen. Past that, the renovation of the tennis courts and, um, basketball courts at Gatling Park with the addition of the pickleball courts at Fifth Avenue, we can go in and make those basketball and tennis courts, um, again as well, so. Other than that, if you guys have any questions?
Uh, go back to the rodeo arena. I know we've been trying to do some things there. When we were talking about Conway moving forward, we've mentioned the amphitheater and things like that. There's also interest in having, uh, a facility built, because from what I understand, there's not one. The closest one we have is, I, I don't want to say Texas, but anyway, where these groups come in, the horse shows and barrel racing and things like that. And, uh, we had one of those on, uh, West College at one time, and, and they did fairly well. They did so well that I think the thing that really hurt them was that the parking was in a floodplain, floodway. the parking was in a floodplain, floodway, and they didn't have enough parking. But as we consider Conway moving forward, there's a there's a a a large group of folks uh, that travel and go to different horse events, uh, sporting events and, you know, I took my grandkids to the PBR this last week. Uh, rodeo and and cowboy events like that are good family. And the folks that are involved, but I want to get that on your radar too, but thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. But one quick question, and I should have emailed you this, I'm sorry. Uh, so thank you guys for fixing the lights at Gatling so quickly. That basketball court right there, there's electrical there. I've never seen the lights on. Does it just not work? Do you know?
They do. It's just, we've got to go in and do a little bit of work too.
Okay.
So.
Just curious. I just noticed that was in the dark most of the time. So again, thank you guys for the quick work.
Yeah.
You said we've got pickleball coming on at Fifth Avenue, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Something that I've read, sound is a problem when you play pickleball. Because of, it's a hard, hard ball, even though it's got holes all in it.
Mm-hmm.
And and the sound of that and the paddle, and I'm not sure where the closest residential apartments or houses are.
I don't, I don't think it's close. Um, it's not closer than what's, it's not closer than Gatling and Tucker Creek right there. Do you guys have any complaints there?
We don't have any complaints as it currently is, and we tried to um, specifically move the pickleball courts away from the neighboring area with residents.
I read an article about that and I just thought, I knew you'd already taken care of it.
Yeah.
Mr. Hawk, is that maybe me, uh, when I play, that groans that you hear from, because everything hurts?
Andrew, I have one question, um, and I don't know if there's any other parks. I don't want to say that they're quote offline, but like the old airport park. Do we have plans for that or do we know? Or and are is there anybody, any other thing like that? I mean, I know I used to play church league softball there way back years ago.
Yeah, so that field is still being used. We have people, especially this time of year and in the fall, practicing baseball, softball on that field. Um, I think with the addition of the community center, there are plans to look at that um, and kind of going forward, make some changes.
Good questions.
Thank you. Old airport property might be a nice place for uh, for horse and bull riding.
I don't think it'd be big enough, that 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 one corner. Yeah, because you have to have a place for folks to park their their, you know, those those trailers and everything as well as a place to keep the animals themselves. But I like the way you're thinking. I do.
Taking that way out by the Expo Center, they've already got.
Yeah.
Pens installed and.
Oh, yeah.
Parking and what.
Any other questions, Mr. Thames? Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Does anyone need a break before we bring our last speaker up? Chief Winter, Conway Fire Department.
I don't know if me going last might have been a strategic move. Always.
Thinking the best.
Preacher told me that the mind can only absorb what the butt can endure. So. Well. It's not yet. Can't find it. I'm not going to waste your time any longer.
Yeah.
Got time?
Yeah, we're good.
We'll make time.
We can, we can get some more doughnut.
Preacher's pet.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. Engine eight. So, uh, when the mayor started, he did mention several things uh, related to the fire department. I just want to take a few minutes to start with. For some of our accomplishments, uh, one thing that we're very proud of is our medic program. We try and put three through every year, and it is a twelve-month program. That is reduced from what is typically an eighteen-month program. So these these firefighters are working hard to get to get through this program. Uh, one thing that they also bring to the board is that they are coupled with the Chief Harris's SWAT team, with Faulkner County SWAT team, with Arkansas State Police, and also with the US Marshals. Uh, they provide medical assistance on scene to all those guys and whoever the bad guys are, they're chasing if need be. Uh, so we're we're very proud of, proud of that bunch and and their day-to-day activities in response to the to the public, it has really made a difference. In twenty twenty-four, uh, we finished our reevaluation from ISO. We were able to maintain our Class One status, which as you are aware, it does affect you individually. It affects the city and affects businesses that come here to keep those insurance ratings low. Uh, we're, we're proud of that, uh, that rating. Uh, the engines that we've. Is that? No, it's not. This is like from the nineteen sixties.
That truck, nineteen eighty-two, I was there.
Oh.
It's made like you let it get away from you.
Um, in twenty nineteen, you guys approved us to purchase uh, a new engine. That's Engine Seven. It is in service. Uh, it did take quite a lick on the interstate a couple of years ago. Uh, we were able to get it refurbished and back in service. Engine eight, uh, you guys approved the purchase of that as a spec engine. We got that in in twenty twenty-four. It is a reserve engine, but it is in service every day. Uh, we also, in twenty-one, um, we ordered Engine Two and Engine Three. Uh, they are. We did receive word actually yesterday that Engine Two may be available for final inspection at the end of April. So we were, we were told uh, in January that it would be mid-March, but it has uh, it's been pushed out about six weeks. So hopefully by the end of May, we'll have that thing in service. We'll get Engine Two into a reserve status. Engine Three, we're still keeping our fingers crossed that we'll have it by the end of the year. But as as the mayor alluded to earlier, uh, these were ordered in twenty-one, and we're just now getting them.
While we're talking about engines, help me out here. When you say Engine Two, Engine Three, Engine Seven, and and. Engine Two, new Engine Two, will it replace the old Engine Two? I mean, keep them numbered for a reason?
Correct, correct.
Go to a certain station?
Yes, sir. They they, so Engine Two will take place of the current Engine Two at Station Two. And yes, the current Engine Two will go into a reserve status.
Oh, that's my next question. When we do get to replace Two and Three, the old engines will be kept here as a reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do have two old engines that are ninety-eight models, uh, that are reserves today, and those will be ones that we will trade in for upping ten thousand dollars each.
Chief, one one other question. Uh, uh, mayor mentioned earlier, three years out. I think I've heard some longer timeframes from you on what we order today. What are we realistically looking at?
On an engine, three to four years. On a truck, four to five years.
Okay.
So yes, that's.
Four to five years, truck, twenty thirty, potentially when we're seeing that.
Correct, and I'll get into that briefly in just a minute.
Sorry for jumping ahead.
No, no, sir. Um, one other thing that uh, through the help of our airport director, uh, he secured us an ARF truck, an airport firefighting and rescue vehicle. Um, we got that from Little Rock. It is now at the airport, and I believe Jacob is working on some type of a grant because it it's currently sitting outside. So I think he's working on some type of grant to get that secured on on an interior and protected. So we're we're thankful for him for that. In our operations division, um, one thing that really stands out here, if if you look at twenty nineteen call volume compared to twenty twenty-four, over a span of five years, our call volume has increased sixty-five percent. Along with that increase in calls is the engines running more, the wear and tear on them, on the on the aging fleet. And they, these are all types of calls, and and you guys are very well aware, whether we're just assisting a citizen off the floor, getting back into bed, or a downtown structural fire, everything in between. Our fire marshals, um, over nine hundred inspections, that that bottom number there, pre-fire plan, and what this is, we do this twice a year. And our guys go out and they go into every business. And so I kind of point this out, I don't know if you guys are aware how many businesses are in Conway. There's over twenty-five hundred businesses inside the city. Uh, we pre-fire plan that twice a year, and and by pre-fire plan, we go in and verify names, address, contact phone numbers. We verify that uh, you know, utilities are intact, all that. It's it's not an inspection, it's it's just to get our paperwork lined out in case of an emergency. One thing that uh, you're you're not aware of, when we we did our last pre-fire planning in October, and that every time we do it, the numbers are the same. We had a hundred and thirty-three businesses that we walked in that were not on paper. They're not recorded in the city. There's not a business license. Um, this is a, we actually went into one not long ago. It was a a hair salon. Previously, the six months previous, we walked in and now it's a uh, an oxygen storage facility, which brings a tremendous hazard. They can't have that there, but there's no process of getting this approved. They can just pay the rent and move in. So you know, to us, and I and I know to PD, a business license would greatly benefit us and the city uh, with knowledge of what's going in and what what they have in there. Okay, some of our ongoing upcoming events. We we are doing a rookie school right now at the training site. This is, we did one last year, we did one this year. Uh, we currently have four in the school. And we hope to have them certified and ready to go by TOSUQ weekend. Um, we run into a problem starting in July of last year, the Arkansas Fire Academy started charging. And we are required to buy a meal ticket, which first time ever. It's always been paid for by the state. It's been covered for the meal ticket. Um, but anytime a firefighter goes to Camden now, we are required to buy them a meal ticket. And for a rookie school, which is seven weeks, that's fourteen hundred dollars. So we have been fortunate. It does cost us a little bit in overtime, but but not fourteen hundred dollars to be able to do the school here. But we also have to have the blessing of the Fire Academy to be able to host it. So just, just something to be aware of. Uh, last year, we we opened the door and and ventured out on this for the first time. We had a retirees breakfast. And uh, I know the mayor was there, Chief Ledbetter was there, and I think it was a a really great success. It is, uh, it's it's to honor all those that have come before us. Uh, we will be doing that again, and you guys are invited. It'll be at Station Three on April eleventh this year. I don't know, Mayor, Chief Ledbetter, have y'all received? Okay, good, good. Finally. Our needs and our challenges. Uh, one of our biggest needs right now, uh, most of you are aware, our pay scale is not comparable to our surrounding uh, departments. I know Alderman Grimes is chairing a committee on that, and they've been working on it. I think they're getting close um, to a presentation. I'm assuming, Mr. Grimes, you'll make that to the mayor and then to the rest of the council if you do find anything. Um, so I'm not really going to go into that here since it's already being addressed. Our radios, we have applied for a grant, but these are twenty-twelve. It's when we bought these radios. You cannot get parts to repair them anymore. The radios have 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 progressed with technology. Uh, we have applied for a grant. We have not heard back from this grant. Uh, but we're looking at one point five million dollars. I think if we were to get the grant, the maximum award is a million. But uh, we're keeping our fingers crossed. Our air packs, our SCBAs, uh, we're looking at about a million dollars. Uh, they're going to have to be replaced within the next four years as they will go out of service. So it's just something to put on the radar.
Those, Chief?
I believe we have approximately a hundred and forty.
Million dollars will cover replacement of all of those?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we we had spoke with the mayor that could we buy so many this year, so many next year and and spread this out? And that is possible. But the timeline would be three years because in three years, they're going to change the specs on them, and the entire department has to fall under the same spec. So Mr. Spurgier, you were asking about engines. Um, as you can see, Engine Two and Engine Three, uh, again, Engine Two will be replaced this year. Those were purchased in twenty-eleven. Uh, they are on a ten-year chassis, so you do the math, they're fourteen years old. Truck One, Engine Six, Truck Five, Engine One, those were purchased in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. If if the mayor said here's all the money you need to purchase two new aerial apparatuses and two new engines, uh, those will be sixteen or seventeen years old by the time if we ordered them today. Uh, so that's, that is a pressing need. Now, I did not tell the mayor I actually, I just found out yesterday that uh, there is a mid-mount aerial apparatus that is demo. It's a demo model for Pierce right now, so it's on the road being demoed. It's coming available in August. Well, actually, I heard Street Department had a lot too. We run on your streets. So we need to look at that. Yes.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Well, he- help us out here. Tell us the differences between an engine, a truck, an aerial apparatus, and how many beats we currently have.
Okay, so a a truck, aerial apparatus, they're they're the same, just different terminology. That's the big ladder trucks. It's got the, they have buckets or what we call Quinn. It's just an aerial ladder. We have Truck One and Truck Five. We also have Truck Six, which is in reserve. Uh, it's actually on frontline quite a bit nowadays, but it's a ninety-six model. And so, um, you're, you know, you're talking almost twenty years on that. And again, that's a ten-year chassis. When we purchased Engine Four and Five, uh, we bought those in twenty fifteen. We bought those on a fifteen-year chassis. So we, we're good with those engines other than just wear and tear on them from all these calls. But uh, so yes. Um, I think the mayor did mention earlier, you know, with the growth of the city, um, mainly towards the Southwest, our response times to those areas are, our our average response time is three minutes and twenty-seven seconds. Uh, so we're, I'm I'm proud of that fact. From the time we get the call to the time, help is on scene, average three minutes, twenty-seven seconds. Uh, it is not that for Southwest. Uh, obviously, you know, the airport, now there's not a lot of traffic in the airport area, but that is one of our longest halls from from the nearest station. We're ten, twelve minutes out from there. Uh, running down old military out that way. That's, so we're we're looking in that general area is for for a new station to serve the, to serve the community. I know Chief Harris mentioned they're out of space at the police department. We're out of space at at our central station. And and the mayor has has talked about some possibilities there uh, moving forward, but I I don't. Something will have to be done in the future with Central Station. Our main, with all that being said, our need is a revenue source where we can have money in the bank and get all these replacements, whether it's air packs, radios, capital expenditures, apparatus, where we can take in money each year and start putting that back so, and get these things on order, get them paid for.
As a bottom line, Santa Claus showed up and had all the money that we needed. Knowing that it's going to be four or five years before we get some of these trucks in, what's our bottom line on just apparatus replacement? And that includes the SCBAs.
Well, for four like radios, SCBAs and apparatus that that need to be ordered now, you're at about nine and a half, ten million.
That's trucks.
Yes, sir. And that that's today's cost. Should, um, Pierce always has a price increase in February, every year.
I ask a stupid question. I'm capable. I'm capable.
Yes, sir, please.
Have we ever looked at becoming a builder of fire truck apparatus in this area?
You know, the mayor or Chief Ledbetter, Mike, to my knowledge, that has never been explored. I haven't, I've been to the Pierce factory several times, and to see that facility, wow, uh, how they operate, and then?
Where is it?
It is in Appleton, Wisconsin. I think Kimberly Clark's headquarters is there also.
Place south of that that manufactures?
Uh, the company E-one is in?
Florida.
Florida?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a place in Louisiana? Cause I don't know, I'm, I'm just.
E-one, what, they continue to be in Florida, is that correct? That's where they started out?
I know, I know they have a plant in Alabama.
Okay.
But.
Well, I could have been wrong.
Their headquarters could be in Florida.
No, I, I may have missed that.
Now, Pierce does have, they do have, they have opened a facility, because it's taking so long, they've identified that, they're trying to get production rolling quicker, they've opened up a facility somewhere in Tennessee.
I mean, as I listen to, not a horror story, but it is, if we can't get equipment in here that we need, wondering why we can't build one of those shiny places that builds fire trucks?
I think, uh, your money, to, to me, from the standpoint, you have to have millions and millions and millions of dollars.
I think you're probably talking billions on, i- if you look at the, at the, uh, Pierce manufacturing, I've been there several times, uh, with R and D, uh, just the, the amount of facilities they have and the equipment they have to have, because pretty much every part of the fire truck, other than the rubber on the tires, is built right there, it's just very impressive. If you ever get a chance, you should go. It is something to see.
Sure.
All the problem.
Chief, you, you also mentioned when we met that while there are other, uh, opportunities other than Pierce of places that you can source fire trucks, that some maybe similar-sized departments have parked up that tree and had some regrets?
They have.
Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Uh, so, I won't name departments, but I know they did venture away from Pierce and went to E-one, that company, about five years down the line, they have ditched those, and they're back on the Pierce train. They didn't, they did, they didn't get ten years out of them, they got five, six years, and the money being sunk into them, um, you know, want, to give you an idea, our, our vehicle maintenance budget this year is three hundred and fifty thousand, that's to keep the trucks on the road. Uh, we're in the middle of March, and we've spent over a hundred and twenty thousand so far, keeping these engines running.
It's a, it's interesting, uh, as, as this council knows, the amount of money we have to, uh, put forward on these trucks, and it's like, we're, we're gonna give them this money, and we'll give you your truck in three years. I don't know how that business model works, it's pretty smart, I would assume, because obviously, they're, they're probably using that money, since they're not even gonna start to build for a number of years, I guess they're using that money to gain interest, I don't know. I can, that's not a, that may not be a fair comment for me, but it's, it's an interesting model, to say the least.
And I agree, and, and the only other thing I can figure is, they're planning for the increase?
Yeah.
In parts, because they don't buy the parts when we order. Um, I, I don't know, that, I agree, that's, we've gotta pay for them before we, three, four years before we get them.
I also don't expect that, I mean, just laws of business, I don't expect that to change, right? Supply and demand, everybody needs this, they're the leader, they get to set the terms, and either we have to settle for quality, or we have to, we have to get on that train of, this is just how it's gonna work.
Correct, I agree.
Mike, roughly, on the ten thousand seven hundred calls for service in twenty twenty-four, roughly, how many of those were medical?
Seventy to seventy-five percent.
So, seven, eight thousand calls were medical, and we've talked about this, we've talked about this, and I know the answer, but I just can't accept this answer. If we're not going to a fire, we don't need to bring a fire truck. But I understand the firemen need to be on the fire truck, in case there is a fire. If we're putting wear and tear on these million-dollar machines that take four years to get, let's get some vehicles that don't cost a million dollars, and we can go to get them quickly. Now, what, I guess what that means, though, is you need extra personnel on those, you leave the firemen with the fire apparatus, I get that, but there's such a lead time on getting trucks, and we, they, the wear and tear is so bad, and the cost of maintaining them is so bad, we've got to find a way to send, do something a little different. I mean, I, that's, that's, that's the broad picture, but doing it is, is down in the weeds. And Mike is? And I'm not asking you to? No, I'm sorry. Right here, but that's something we've got to do. And I don't want to answer for the chief, uh, and Chief Ledbetter and I have had this discussion as well, Mike is doing that somewhat, he has some on-duty paramedics that, that he has in, uh, response vehicles, you hit it on the head, Mr. Grimes, uh, and chief has talked about this, that was probably something we need to look at, but there, we will have to hire the additional personnel, he's got a great start with his paramedics, the number of paramedics he has and the folks he's training, and, uh, I think that is something that, that we've talked about, he's willing to look at, it's a very good point. Yeah, I mean, you know, he. You're seeing other departments do it, aren't you, Mike? Even if you start slow, even if you just get two men on a, or two paramedics on a truck, and I say truck, I don't mean your kind of truck, I mean a truck, pickup truck.
Or something.
Um, and then, you know, one on East Side Town, do the same thing on West Side Town, and, and I don't know, there has to be a way to do that, there has to be, but.
Oh, you, Mr. Grimes, you kind of got ahead of me, uh, I guess I'll catch the mayor off guard, I was kind of planning on coming to him maybe mid-year with a, with a proposal.
See, great minds think a lot, there you go.
So, chief, you know, new kid here, so I can ask for some education from you and from other council members here, but i- in, in most cities, aren't, uh, most, in a lot of cities, are we not also running? And so, I'll stop there.
Yeah, well, that is a long-term goal, is for the, the city to run the ambulance. And when Pafford took over three years ago, I made them very well aware that our goal is to take over, to put y'all out of a job, um, where, I, I mean, I personally feel like we provide, Pafford does an excellent job, but it's more personal to us, you know, the citizens that we serve, I think we could do a better job, and that is our, well, I'm still here, that's, my ultimate goal is to get the ambulances, City of Conway, Conway Fire Department, ambulance service, um, running out of stations, and I've got some numbers on what it would take, um, to purchase ambulances, get enough medics through school or hire medics to do that. Um, now, that's, when you look at the bigger picture, and I don't like to get into the money portion of making medical calls, but you start to turn a profit and put money back in, which could then offset the budget to be incorporated towards capital purchases?
Sure.
Of that nature, but, uh, that's not, that's not the main reason, but that would be, to me, a byproduct.
And the, the study we did in the early two thousands, and this may have changed, Mike, seems like you actually start making money after your fourth year, does that sound right?
I do believe that that's what was back then.
Yeah, it may have changed since then.
I'm, looking at the numbers that the current ambulance service, um, I know what they charge, I know how many calls they make, I don't, and I know what it would cost to stand up an ambulance service, I don't see four years at all, I, I'm thinking maybe a year.
Really?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we need to have a discussion about that, uh, another day, uh, sooner than later.
So it would be a big capital upfront?
Yes.
Kind of like what we did with transportation?
Yes, it'd be a huge outlay, but.
To get it going.
But here's, here's the, the key, the key is, I personally believe it would be better for the citizens in Conway. Pafford does a tremendous job, tremendous job, so no, nothing toward them at all, uh, they have great people in Conway, and they do a great job, but I think you can look at the, the history of fire service-based ambulance service, and they are quite successful.
Would, would these medics, EMTs, I'm, I'm not sure I'm using the correct terminology, would they also be fully trained?
Yes.
Firefighters? So, so when we do have a fire?
Yes.
Not only can they respond?
Be like Gage in DeSoto.
Oh, there you go. I'm old enough to remember that.
We, we are, NFPA is the standard we try and meet, and there is a certain number of firefighters that have to be on scene, whether it's a residential or a commercial structure, and that's why we have to send so many engines, is to get our numbers there to do it as safely as possible. Uh, and so, some of those units that arrive are just manpower, uh, they're not supplying water, they're, they're just manpower, so, yes, that's another.
Chief, how, how are we currently on staffing? I mean, as far as, are we staffed well, or, I mean, because we're talking about bringing more people on, or expanding departments, where are we currently, what does that look like now and in the future?
And no one is off, no sick, comp, vacation, workers, nothing, we staff three men on every unit. Um, and usually January, February, we're good, once we hit spring break, and then through the summer, uh, we do have five units that will drop down to a two-man company.
Okay, so what, what does that mean?
Well.
I'm not, you know, I'm just regular Joe here.
To kind of get into it, fire service requires two in, two out, and what that means is, if I'm getting ready to make an interior attack with a two-man crew, I've got to have two firefighters at the porch to back them up, but when you're running a two-man crew, we have to wait on a second unit to get there before we can make entry. So if somebody's in the house, that wouldn't stop us, don't get me wrong, but as far as, you know, the NFPA, the standard, yes, so it is a, it is a delay, could be a delay getting into the house, waiting on a, waiting on a second unit.
Yeah, is NFPA standard still four men in a truck?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any other questions to the chief? Yes, sir.
How many vacancies do we have right now, they're trying to fill?
Today, no.
Thank you.
Do have two letters on my desk.
I was about to say, was there a thought behind that today?
Yes, I do have two letters on my desk.
Thank you, chief. You need to be, everybody needs a buddy like that, nothing. Thank you, chief, winner.
Chief, appreciate your work.
Council, uh, the floor is open, if y'all would like to have some open discussions about some of these, okay, here's, here's the thing, it sounds like we've got a lot of problems in Conway, but they're good problems to have, they go with growth, uh, I think Mr. Winningham hit it on the head, it's easy to sit back and say, well, we've got all these meetings, the city's job is not to have a bank account, we're not paying dividends to anyone, we do have to have reserves for a rainy day, the city's job is to provide services, and as a growing city, we, the council, we have to figure out ways to pay for these things going forward, because none of it's going to be cheaper. Uh, not only our police and fire and streets, and I'd mentioned how tough it is to be a police officer, it's tough to be a firefighter, too, our street department guys, sanitation workers, they work out in the heat, the bad weather, all of our employees do a tremendous job, all of them. But as a city moving forward, not only do we have to provide these basic services, we still have to look at growing our city and growing the amenities and continuing to be a city that industry and other folks want to live in, and we want to keep our people here, we want to keep our Conway people here, that go to school here, that live here, we want folks to keep their grandkids here, and in order to do that, we have to provide our basic services, police, fire, streets, sanitation, parks, but we also need to look forward in, uh, how we are going to do and what we are going to do, and that will, with the, uh, there's a lot of things that have to be taken into consideration, not just the economy of the city, the economy of the nation, and everything that's going on. This meeting today was one, so that we could take the time to discuss a lot of things and to hear a lot of reports from different departments, uh, so that, I know you, for the most part, the council, you guys know everything that's going on, this was really for the public, so they could really get a good idea of what the city does, and what each department does, and what their needs are, and so I appreciate the, everyone showing up, uh, department heads who coming out and speaking for your department, we have other departments that we'll, we'll hear from in the future. But, uh, at this point in time, unless there's some discussion y'all want to have, some ideas, some thoughts, uh, that's all I had for today, but, yes, sir, Mr. Hawkins.
Can I make one comment, if I could? I went out to animal welfare yesterday, Spencer, and I want to compliment the people that are out there, uh, David Mitchell and his crew, uh, are doing a fantastic job, uh, under, under trying circumstances, and as I understand it, uh, we've been a no-kill shelter?
Yes.
For some time now, and, and that really is, uh, is a good thing, as far as I am. Yeah. Let me tell you, it, it, I, I, I got a chance to walk around the facility, and if y'all have not been out lately, I would suggest that you go out and take a look, because, uh, the people out there are, are very inviting and, and very engaging, um, and, uh, work that they're doing, I really appreciate that, thank you very much.
Do they still have that big snake in the lobby?
The other day.
I'm, I'm now.
All right, thank you. Mayor, mayor, I, I want to say thank you for calling this today, uh, as a guy that's relatively new on the council, um, this is highly encouraging, you know, I mean, yes, we are a growing city, and like you said, they're not problems, they're just growing pains that we see, but having served on the state with legislative audit, and having seen what some of the other cities struggle with, folks, we are blessed.
We are.
We are blessed to be in Conway, so thank you so much, and, uh, Chief Harris, Chief Winter, thank you guys, because you guys are public safety, and you guys are in the mix of all the growing pains, and we are here to support you, and, uh, we'll just keep open dialogue, and the structure, uh, needs, whatever, I mean, I, I'm encouraged by today, and, uh, and thank you again, mayor, for, for calling this.
And Ms. Whit, Ms. Mel has worn me down, we'll probably do this right before budget time again, just, I hope you're happy, Shelley.
I would be in favor of that.
You know, just, just to remind everybody what we heard today, and from the other departments.
I would like to recognize someone here, as you may or may not know, uh, a, a previous lieutenant, Lieutenant Presley, has been our guardian at the door, well, that has changed now, that is, this is now Major Presley. Jacob, would you, would you like to say anything before we leave? Okay. Yes, sir.
What was your hope for us, uh, did you want, want us to talk more about future priorities, or are we just taking this information, downloading it, and following up? I'm good either way.
I'm good either way, too, this was a lot to absorb today, that's why we didn't want, I didn't want to do it at a council meeting?
Yeah, we'd be here till eleven o'clock.
We'd be at ten o'clock or later.
Yeah, past my bedtime.
If y'all want to, yeah, mine, too, uh, if you want to, we can do it either way, it's up to this council, we can talk about it right now, or we can come back and talk about it.
Sleep on this, and maybe, you know, in a month or two, whatever, maybe off Tuesday night, between meetings or something, we come back and, you know, go into a little more about priorities and.
Well, and I think we have some information coming, like from David's committee, and, and, well, you, you know, I think having all of that, to also, you know, to my mind, those are some of the top priorities we need to be looking at, so.
What's your timeline there, roundabout, again?
Well, we had to take a pause due to my eye, but we're back on, we had a meeting this past week, um, we're gonna meet with the fire chief, um, as soon as we can get that scheduled, um, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll pull a Felicia, summer, we'll, we'll be done summer.
Oh, yeah, you can't ever pin her down on a date.
We'll be, we'll be, whenever, whenever they're open, we'll be ready, community center, when the community centers open, we'll be ready, summer.
There you go.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, sooner rather than later, uh, but we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a timeframe that's established necessarily.
And we hadn't, chief, we hadn't previously promised, I, I'm not speaking with Mr. Grimes here, just from what the rest of us have said, we haven't previously promised you a date or anything that, okay, okay. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm good with, with leaving it for the future, I, the, the facilitator in me is seeing themes here, and I'm kind of seeing three things that we have to pay attention to, long-term funding of infrastructure. Long-term funding of infrastructure that's changed nationwide, not Conway being lazy, but things have changed for police, things have changed for fire. Long-term planning for infrastructure, quality of life improvements that we want to look at that include parks, amphitheater, et cetera, et cetera. And then the third that I'm kind of seeing from today is just maintaining what we have. Would we all agree that those are kind of the three buckets we've got to pay attention to?
Yeah, I think that's a good summation of the whole thing, yeah.
And I think it would be smart to go chew on all that.
And I've said this, I guess it's the fourth or fifth time, I'm glad to have these kind of problems, whereas we're not having to sit around thinking about where are we gonna cut to to take care of this? Our, our, we're, we're a tremendous city, we have great citizens, we're growing, we're a city that people want to be a part of, and we want to continue down that road.
Just a big commendation to to your staff, to Felicia, Shwana and everybody else that have friends that serve on councils in other cities, and it's, it's not the same vibe, right? It's not the same vibe, we're fighting over ego instead of figuring out how to get the work done. And I think it's nice to all get up early on a Saturday morning and come focus on how we all work together to move forward.
It was fun, I, I enjoyed it, thank you, everyone. That's all we have.